Hey Susan. New John Bacon, got younger and more lovely. Sir, we're good, okay. Give me one second folks while I lower the volume here. Okay. Welcome everybody. We're about to begin our May 19th meeting with our public hearings. First of which is ordinance O-22-5 in ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, adopting the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23. Is there anybody here that has any comment on that ordinance at this time? Hearing none, I'll move on to the next one.
No motion, I need to order.
No, no we're, no, but thank you. Next, ordinance O-22-6 in ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, adopting the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23, setting rates, charges and fees related to water and source service by the towns. Is there anybody in the public that has a comment? Please come forward and state your name and personal address. Mr. Wesley.
Jeez, sorry. Do I need to repeat that?
No.
I just wanted to make sure that the council received the email I sent earlier today and that it'll go into the public record with, I believe it was six or seven questions I had about the utility fund budget.
They have and it will.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you sir. Anybody else have a comment at this time? If not, we'll move forward to ordinance O-22-7 in ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comments at this time from the public? Hearing none, I'll move on. O-22-8 in ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '20 '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comments from the public at this time? Hearing none, I'll move on. Ordinance O-22-9 in ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year, pardon me, my eyes are going there. For the fiscal year July 1 of '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comments at this time? Hearing none. Ordinance O-22-10 in ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the annual budget for the water park fund and the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any comment at this time? Hearing none, I'll move on. Ordinance O-22-11 in ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the adopted general fund budget of the town of Chesapeake Beach for fiscal year July 1, '21 to June 30 of '22 to add funds in the amount of $25,000 in the general fund hotel tax and general government salaries and wages. Any comment at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Now we'll take a break till 7 o'clock when we start the actual meeting. Welcome everybody to the May 19th Town Council meeting. Let the record read that the entire council minus Dr. Bodine is present. At this point in time, the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none. Approval of the minutes of the April 21st Town Council meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the May 19th special meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. And lastly, approval of the minutes of the May 10th informational work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. At this point in time, we're going to, we have a special presentation. I believe Savannah is going to do this here, okay? It's a proclamation from the governor of the state of Maryland for National Water Safety Month. And we have our wonderful employee up here, Savannah, who's going to read the proclamation for us? Or how do you want to do this, Holly? Let me stand.
Yes, Savannah is going to read the proclamation for us. And yes, right there, thank you. And Savannah's manager, Carla, could not be here this evening, but she wanted to express Savannah's dedication to safety and her appreciation for everything you do to make sure the water park and all of our patrons are safe. Thank you Savannah.
Wow, okay. Sorry, this is my first time doing something like this. So this is the state of Maryland proclamation from Governor Hogan. This is for the National Water Safety Month, which is May 2022, whereas Marylanders recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic related activities related to good physical and mental health and enhance the equality of life for all people. And whereas the citizens of Maryland understand the central role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays preventing drownings and recreational water related injuries. And whereas Maryland is aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry as represented by the organizations involved in the National Water Safety Month Coalition in developing safe swimming facilities, aquatic programs, home pools and spas and related activities providing healthy places to recreate, learn and grow, build self-esteem, confidence and a sense of self-worth which contributes to the quality of life in our community. And whereas the citizens of Maryland recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives by the pool, spa, water park, recreation and park industries. And whereas the citizens of Maryland understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages where, by their owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities or visitors to water parks. Whereas Maryland is pleased to join in supporting National Water Safety Month and promoting increased education and water safety to make everyone more water aware. Now therefore, I Lawrence J. Hogan, Governor of the State of Maryland, hereby proclaim May 2022 as National Water Safety Month in Maryland and do commend this celebration to all citizens.
Thank you.
Yes, and we have a video that Savannah put together about water safety and we will release this video on our town website after this meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is it right here, so.
Hi, my name is Savannah Richardson and I am the Aquatic Manager for the state of Chesapeake Beach. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about water safety and being water aware and what that actually means. So Dr. Hogan actually declared the month of May as National Water Safety Month, which is awesome. So basically this implements parks throughout the entire country as well as other pool facilities to make sure that their guests are water aware and being safe throughout their entire trip throughout the day at that specific facility. So what that actually means, we do have some safety tips that we implement at the park and at other facilities actually implement at their parks as well. So one of the biggest tips is to actually learn how to swim. It is very, very important that everyone actually learns how to swim when they go to a facility that has a pool. Whether or not that pool is three and a half feet or nine feet, it can be very important, no matter where you go. It's an important thing for adults and children to know. I know that our facility does have swim lessons offered for ages from mommy and daddy classes all the way up to age of like 12. So it's a really cool thing to make sure your kids go and actually learn how to swim. So they're prepared for any form of pool that they're going to get in throughout the entire summer. We also do something called the World's largest swim lesson. This is actually really awesome. It's sponsored by the World's largest swim lesson association. This is the pool held, excuse me, on June 23rd. Their slogan is swim lessons save lives and they really, really do. So this is something that everyone can go sign up for and bring their kids and we go through a major swim lesson today. And it's really awesome. This is something that gets held throughout the entire country slash world. If you go on their website, you can actually see every single facility that is holding the World's largest swim lesson. And so the main goal is that all of us together are holding a swim lesson on the same day, knowing that that's our goal is to ensure that swim lessons do save lives and it's throughout the entire world, which is really awesome. Another safety tip that everyone can do is look for lifeguards. At our specific facility, we have 17 to 18 working a day and we are there to ensure that you are safe and all of your family and your friends are safe when they enter the water and you are there entire day at the park. It's very important to make sure that they're supervised by lifeguards or by another role. Another thing that we implement is something called the buddy system. So it is very, very important that we implement that swimming alone can be actually dangerous. So if you are swimming alone, you can become super lethargic and very tired if you don't have someone else looking out for you. And this is why we implement some of the buddy system so someone can actually look out for you whether that's an adult, a lifeguard, something else, someone that is with you throughout the day. Another thing that is specific to our facility is we take 15 minute safety breaks throughout the day. Basically this means all guests have to get out of the water and it serves as a form of a break. So a lot of the times when you come to a water park, you want to get as much pool time in as possible and everyone's running around, everyone's trying to have fun. And that is, our main goal is that you do have a good time. We also want to make sure that you are safe throughout your day with us. So when we implement this, this is not simply just people who want all of them to get out of the water. We want you to, we get these groups that you can work, we want to make sure that every single child has an adult with them. We also want to make sure that you have time to eat and drink water and stay hydrated. This is one of the most important things whenever you go to a pool. A lot of times people forget to eat, people forget to drink water and it is super important because when you don't have the energy that you need to swim, it can lead to more drownings happening throughout the day. So this is that, one of the things that we are super, super passionate about and we really like to implement, just so everyone can stay safe throughout the entire day. Another big, very important thing is applying sunscreen. This is another reason why we do the safety breaks because a lot of times when you're in and out of the water, sunscreen's the last thing that you're thinking about. But it is super important that you put it on before you get in the water and reapply every single hour. The sun can be very, very, very dangerous and because we are specifically an outside facility, it's heating down all day long. So that's just some of the things that we specifically implement and a lot of other facilities I know implement this as well. It is super important to make sure that you yourself are water aware and that you're being safe throughout your entire trip at the water park. Another thing that we specifically have at the water park are free life jackets. So not every facility unfortunately has this luxury, but we do, we have life jacket stations per se throughout the entire water park and we do have signs. They're free to use for guests throughout the day. And we have sizes from infant to all the way up to adult sizes as well. So if you cannot swim and know that you can't swim or that your children can't swim, it is super important to put this life jacket on then and make sure that you're safe when everybody enters the water. So that's a little bit about our water safety and how we actually do it at our local town facility. Thank you all for listening and I hope you guys have a very safe, water aware summer and hopefully we'll see you soon.
Great job Savannah. One last thing, you want to come up, I'd like to have a photo up with the Town Council and itself and the proclamation. And next, we have little, meet and greet Steve Sharp, who is a candidate for the Board of Appeals. Steve, if you don't mind, you're coming up here. We've all read his bio. What we usually do Steve is give you a minute or so, whatever, just say whatever you want about yourself and the council has any questions, they'll ask you. But I want to kind of preempt probably what you gave us, just I guess for the, you know, town's sake is, Steve moved into town, you know, a year ago or so. He lives right down the street, you know, from me and he's, he's been interested in the town and what's going on from day one. In fact, he followed our election and what we were all about and it was all part of the choice for him to bring his young family, his beautiful wife and his young handsome son Cullen here, which is very similar to four of the seven up here. I mean, you know, Valerie, myself and Greg and Keith, we all raised our young ones here. So and we remember the passion we had as, you know, new parents to, you know, want to raise these kids in a new place. So I appreciate Steve's passion, you know, for the town. I didn't realize he was researching me on the internet, but he, so he's been very active, he's been, you know, he's been, I've been wanting to get him involved, so I took the old ride and I cast it out there and see if he would bite, you know, and he did. So I thought that the Board of Appeals would be a good, you know, way to start. And Steve, I probably just said everything that you were going to say.
Pretty much, yeah.
Lieutenant Sharp, I should say. He just made a lieutenant not that long ago, so that's great. I'm sorry.
What about me? So just a little background. I was born and raised in Illinois. Moved out to Connecticut in high school, my family. Graduated from the University of Bridgeport in Bridgeport, Connecticut and moved down to DC for 15 years. I've been with the Metropolitan Police Department, 15 years. Currently, I'm a lieutenant. I've been doing that now for the past year. Lieutenant's job is basically you serve as a watch commander, supervising any given day 30 to 60 officers and sergeants. When I'm not doing that, internal investigations, which range from employee misconduct all the way up to use of force, where officers get involved in, you know, using force on a subject. So I have to investigate that and justify it, yes or no. And. and justify it yes or no. And we was living, I was living in DC and we just decided to move, you know, crime and all that stuff in a big city. It's just not a good place to raise a family and real estate agent showed us Chesapeake Beach and we just absolutely fell in love. Bought a house right there on 4013 at 14th Street and is where we are. I love it.
Thanks Steve. I'll start with Charlie if he has any questions or comments.
I don't have any subsequent questions, you know, between what Mayor Mahoney said and what you said. I'm thrilled to have you involved. I'm kind of curious, where'd you live in DC?
Southeast DC.
If you don't mind, oh, where?
Uh, East Capitol. East Capitol and 56 Place.
Yeah, okay, cool. I just sold a house in DC and been here. And I had one follow-up question to that. Oh, who showed you, who introduced you to Chesapeake Beach? Who's your real estate agent?
Sherman Roberts. And the one we were using, so we used him, we met, who was his, I forgot his name. I forgot his name. But um, so we started using Sherman Roberts and he took us down here, you know, he would go to traders and the rod and wheel and stuff like that. And my wife never heard about it. And I heard about the Breezy Point and I know some buddies of mine that, you know, took the kids down there on weekends and stuff like that. But I actually never made it down here. And then we came down here looking for houses. We looked all over Virginia, Charles County, everywhere. We just fell in love with it down here, so.
Interesting. I mean, not, not relevant, but I was just kind of curious. We discovered this town through a real, a DC real estate agent who said you, you guys should check out Chesapeake Beach, that was about 10 years ago. And it does seem like it's not on everyone's radar. So well, welcome and thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for raising your hand to volunteer for this. My question is sort of similar to Charlie's. Where in Illinois?
Cook County, Arlington Heights.
Arlington Heights?
Yes.
I'm a Northwest Side city boy myself.
Okay.
And I can, you can relate to the fact that I think there's still one or two outstanding warrants probably still there. So welcome.
Thank you.
Don't turn them in.
Won't tell anybody.
Sir.
Welcome to the town of Chesapeake Beach.
Thank you.
Uh, don't blame me for staying. We bumped into this sleepy town ourselves about 24 years ago and haven't looked back. It's been a wonderful place. Appreciate you stepping up, your volunteerism. I look forward to seeing you surf.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Well, so thank you for your service, both on the police department and now for the town of Chesapeake Beach. We really appreciate it. It's the volunteers that really help keep our town going. So again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Emily, thank you for stepping up to volunteer here. We always can use more. But I actually do have a question for you. So what is it about the Board of Appeals that appealed to you?
Well, as I was telling Pat, I would like to get into town government and do my, you know, volunteer. I like the fact that, you know, you're making decisions. So I like the small town character here. I, you know, I, Board of Appeals, you're not, you know, it's not planning zoning or you're not making any major decisions. But, you know, you don't want to see stuff that is not conducive to the town, you know, and I like having a say in that instead of, you know, other people that, you know, tell me and stuff what you can build and all that. I just think it'd be a good start for me to get in there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Welcome.
So Steve, your next meeting, you'll be sitting up here and you won't be able to leave early. So I'm going to tell you, you can go home to your family now.
Yeah. Thanks for stepping up.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Okay, the town administrators report. Holly, is there anything outstanding you want to share? We've all read your report.
No, there's not. Thank you.
Okay, then Peggy, do you have any, any questions or comments for Holly?
Yeah, I have a couple. Under the federal dredge preparation, you thought the improvements were expected to be released by May 13th, were they? Is there any news?
I did not see them released. I checked. I'll follow up with them this week.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thanks. It was, you know, optimistic to think so anyway. And for the, under, on page two, under the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, you talked about make recommendations to address two issues. What were the issues?
Yeah, so we had our, our town engineer visit our, our water park and do a walkthrough after some repairs taken place by public works and water park staff. And so there was one area that had a waterfall that basically it was decided to abandon it for the season. And also a, would you call that a enclosure for steps? Something that was not in use. It was just enclosed. Also had to, public works had to take some measures as well to ensure that was secured before opening.
Thanks. And the, the last sentence, for the replacement timeline, so it's to talk about replacing the waterfall?
So we wanted to just prepare town council that we do plan after the season, once the close of the park, to come back with a couple of different options. Our town engineer is working on a 3D model of the park right now, but we do recognize that the above the pool features will have to be addressed.
Okay, great. That's all my questions. Thank you Holly.
Thanks.
No questions. Thank you. No questions for me. Thanks.
Just for the record, note in here about employment opportunities on the water reclamation treatment plant, then we have others.
Yes.
Code enforcement, county technician and public works technician are all available on site if anyone's interested. I did have a question under the dredge preparation. There is a barge and a crane out there now. How does that fit into this dredge work? Do we know?
That should be private work taking place by, I believe, Rodden Real.
Thank you. And then just two other quick ones. Any update on the Highlands connection? When that might happen?
They are to schedule another special hearing is the, the status that they are currently. The county is supposed to schedule that. I have not seen the date yet. They have let me know that they will notify the town when it's scheduled.
Last one I have was just, as I usually do every month on the Safe Routes to School, is there anything we can do to move that along?
We are still waiting on the MOU. We followed up a couple of times. I know Wayne has also provided further updates. So we'll definitely keep you posted.
Okay, thank you. So I have.
Yeah, I was going to, you know, let Holly off the hook and ask Wayne about Safe Routes in his report, but I'll, I'll skip that one for now. I, I just wanted to emphasize and Holly, tell me if I have this correct. You and I were communicating over the last week or so. I may have, I may have made a mistake in that communication, but in any case, we are going to get some dates set, two to three weeks out for public input. So, you know, folks in my committee are anxious to see that happen and these are really good projects. Hopefully these will, will break ground on these before Safe Routes to School. I mean, not preferably, but preferably. Do you have any update on the Richfield Station plat? I, I didn't ask for this in advance, so if the answer is no, that's fine.
So we have a pending meeting. You're talking about the 200 acres of land. Yes, we have a pending meeting that I'm working with our town attorney with a developer and that is an item on the list. So.
When is, can I ask when that is?
It's still pending. We don't have it scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, the operations manager report. As we said, Carla can't make the meeting. If we have any questions of Holly, we can, we can ask them. I'll begin with Charlie if you have any questions on that.
I do not.
Larry?
Not a real question, just wanted to point out to the public that's listening, if you have a chance to look at this, it's an incredible list of activities that are going to be happening here in our town. So it's a good thing to check up on that and keep checking the town website because we update those regularly. I noted in here, it points out on the National Tourism and Tourism Week in Calver County, I'll be commenting on that during my economic development report. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morris?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay. Keith?
No questions. Thank you.
Sir?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the, the public, the operate, whoops, the Public Works Administration, administrators report. If we have any questions of Jay, he's over there. I'll begin with Peggy.
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions. No questions from me. Thank you.
No questions. Just keep up the good work, Jay. Thank you.
Yeah, no questions, but thank you for the mini tour. That was by a tail end of that other, other work that we did. That was really kind of interesting and I had never seen that space out there. So it was educational to see what you, a little more hands-on, see what you guys were doing with upgrading that facility, air conditioning and et cetera. So thank you for your time there.
Thank you, sir. Next, the water reclamation treatment plant report. We read Josh's report. If we have any questions, here's Josh.
Yeah, once again, I have no questions because Larry's sitting next to me, but I will also thank you and John for the tour. That was outstanding. Always, one of them, it's going to sound weird, it's one of the most entertaining hours I ever spent. I love seeing John go up, so enthusiastic and Josh, same for you, you know, big shoes to fill, but clearly I, I would, I would insert some sort of no year, but I, I won't do that because.
Right. We might have to keep John on as like a impromptu tour guide for when we have stuff like that.
Bring the kids in.
Take some money.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And thank you for hosting and I'm hoping now of my fellow council members, now that you've done a tour, maybe I don't have to carry the load all the time and asking questions about the water reclamation treatment plant. I will just point out that one of the few times I can remember in, in months that we actually had to use the shellfish protection tank. So that's a, a good thing to have there. It's further protection about what goes into the bay. And I was going to ask a question on the filter covers, but I'll, I see that under Wayne's report, so I'll defer on that. Thank you.
No questions from me. Thank you.
No questions. Thanks.
No particular questions. I just wanted to get, to say thank you for the tour that we had. It was fascinating. So much interesting. And Larry, I learned so much, I don't have to ask questions anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Next, we've read the soon to be retired Connie Odell's code enforcement report. If we have any questions of Connie, I'll begin with, really?
Well Connie, I just want to say, I am so sorry you're leaving. That's my selfish side. My better side says congratulations to you moving on to do new, better things.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. In just a short time that you've been here, we've had some interesting conversations.
Yeah. Well, you know, me and where I live. But thank you. That's all.
You're welcome.
No, I just want to echo those sentiments. I'm going to miss you. So you take care.
Thank you. I'm not going for a couple of months. I'll be around.
Oh, good. I am. I am glad about that. So great. Thanks. Um, no questions on.
Thank you.
No questions from Ms. Odell. Thanks.
Well, I, I get to you. Connie, I, I don't think it's too early to start celebrating your retirement. You know, I, as I look back at mine, I think the last couple of months are, it was fun. I couldn't stop smiling, just like you are right there. I, just like the one Dale has all the time. Yeah. Yeah, that's the same one. So.
I got it from him, actually.
Take a picture. I mean, that's, it's like the best smile of your life. It's great, you know? So I, so I just want to, you know, thank you for all your hard work. If there's one thing I've learned about Connie Odell is she's, she works. She goes, she works hard. You know, that, that's what she does. She doesn't come here to, you know, play around. She works. So I thank you for that. You know, if we could clone, you know, more of that, that'd be great. But, you know, we're happy that we had you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. I'll go to Larry. We're all getting ready to cry. So, you know.
I'm not going to.
Well, I've already shared comments with Connie, but I will just point out that you can't leave until CE 19-17 and 18-76 are closed.
You have got that right. I'm so tired of looking at those things.
We will find you.
Good luck.
I'm, I'm going to be easy to find.
I'd echo what Larry said. You and I have already chatted. I, you know, I wish you all the best. That's all I can say.
Thank you all so much. No questions?
No, no questions.
Putting it easy to them one tonight? Okay, thanks.
Thank you Connie. Yeah. And you too. I, I couldn't keep you here if I wanted to. So if, if you, if you want to enjoy your evening and get used to retirement, feel free.
I actually have got to go answer a couple of questions on an inspection we have tomorrow. So I may go back to my office for a minute.
And don't let us hold you up.
All right.
Thank you Connie. See what I said about hard work? Yeah. Okay, next, we don't have a town treasurer's report, but it is great to see Brittany and Dale there. She's, they're working together real hard with their, their transition. So it's been great to see. County engineers report, we've read Wayne's report. If we have any questions of Wayne, I guess we'll, we'll go that way.
Yeah, just, you know, you've written it here. So I guess asking about it's kind of pointless, but it just, is it me or is this just insane? Insanely long?
Which project?
Ah, the 261 sidewalks.
It's insanely long. We've done all we can do to push the project forward without states sending us to MOU. We've gotten to NEPA approval and they're ready to issue approval. There's nothing else more I can do until they send us our MOU. And Holly and I both have been following up. We'll continue to do so. I think it's unfortunately a sign of the times that we have from our state, our state government.
Well, and of course it's not directed at you. Just, it's just frustration, particularly, you know, carrying on Derek's work.
Agreed.
You note in the heritage that there, that there'll be a punch list. I'm just kind of curious if that, if we will, if that will be shared, if we will be able to see that?
I would imagine we could, we could share it with you. I don't know why we couldn't. When they're complete and they think they're complete with everything that Jay has informed them up to date, then Jay and I will go back and walk it and confirm it's all complete or give them other, other items. Be happy to share it.
Yeah, I would find it educational. I don't think I'll have any useful comments on it. I would just find it educational. So thanks.
Be happy to.
Just off for additional comment on 261 sidewalks, I understand the frustration in dealing with the state. I'm wondering, maybe we've already done this, reaching out to Michael Jackson or Lady Gretchen? Is it the?
Yeah, we have.
Okay. All right. Well, keep, keep pushing and look forward to seeing the bids on the UV protection. Hopefully they'll come in probably what, end of June is, if it goes out the end of this month?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, no questions for Wayne. Thanks.
No questions.
I just have a, I have a question on the dredging. So the finance team visited. Why the finance team?
The Corps of Engineers administrator who was there that day explained to us that they like to take their finance team employees out to understand and see what they are funding. It was 24 people came out and walked it. They all stood up on the, on the balcony of the rod and wheel. They were nice enough to give them access to see where the location of the jetty is. It happened to be a, a great day because tide was very high and there was really no jetty to see. They were apparently went on a tour of several sites. They stopped at this site to see what they're funding. That was pretty much the extent of it. They also looked at the dredge material placement site. I think it was more for their internal understanding of how a process works.
Oh, great. Did they have a lot of questions?
They had no questions.
Well, interesting. And then that last sentence, the project doesn't have their MDE quality certificate? What does that mean?
So federal projects used to be exempt from state permitting. A state permit for disturbing tidal wetlands and waterways is called a state water quality certification. So in essence, they're waiting for their MDE permit. And they won't let the permit, they won't let the bids out until they receive it.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. I know I'm sending everybody home early, but I'm going to ask you to stay. The North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, we've read the report. If we have any questions, please funnel in. I'm sorry, Lieutenant. We, I, I got so excited having two lieutenants in the room. I didn't know what to do there. Okay. Thank you, Larry. My lieutenant. We, we've read the deputies' report. If we have any, any questions of Lieutenant Hollinger, I'll, I'll begin again with Charlie.
If you can't comment on this, I understand. There was news recently about, well, I just say there was news recently about several arrests. Wondering if there's any update on the news that we saw around the Abner family? Not on this report.
Sure. I could tell you what I know. If you want to meet after the meeting or if there were some arrests, some search warrants and some arrests, at least three arrests were made that I can think of right now.
We, we, you know, we've all read the media, you know, social media, you know, given the, the sensitivity of our, of our good friend there, I would appreciate it if, if the councilman's okay that you chat after the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, or if you're not around, we can, we can follow up. My concern is getting real information, not social media. So that's why I'm asking.
I, that's a good, that's a good reason.
I'll stick around till after the meeting if that's okay.
I appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Uh, no questions. Thanks for your service. Be safe.
You know, it's funny, in, in the May meeting, I always, you know, bring this up and you're, you're well aware that this is, we're getting real close to when the kids get crazy. You know, I mean, every year we forget, I don't, I guess because I live in a more, you know, crowded area of town. And I don't know what it is about school getting out, but all of a sudden there's, it seems like there's, you know, more vandalism in a seven day period than you. in a seven day period than you get, you know, the prior 51 weeks. They just go crazy doing kid stuff and all of that. And I know you're, you're ready for them by now, you know? I mean, you know, they don't do anything different. Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready for it. Even, even the schools have increased enforcement. They have deputies throughout the county stationed there overnight because of the senior pranks and that kind of vandalism. So it's definitely, this is a busy time for us to be vigilant.
Well, you know, this is my 26th May, you know, being up here. And I can tell you, kids don't change. Same thing we were talking about 26 years ago, we're still talking about, you know?
Yes, sir.
Except there's no cell phones anymore, you know? But thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
No questions for me. Thank you.
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Nice to see you here in person and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Councilwoman. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Next, as I was starting to say, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, we've read the report. If we have any questions, please funnel them to Larry at your earliest convenience.
Mayor, could I just offer a comment?
Please do, sir.
Just for everyone's information, Fire Department is scheduled to host a car wash fundraiser this Sunday. This is for the Northern High School Key Club. It will be this Sunday, May 22nd, noon to 3:00. And the purpose of the fundraiser is raising money for the eliminate project, which supplies resources for women and children to get crucial vaccines in Africa. So hopefully the rain holds off on Sunday. Come on out. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you, sir. I didn't know that. We're going to have a slide coming up soon, right? Okay. Okay. We are going to have a slide that's coming up soon, but I'm going to begin my mayor's report with a couple of items. One, we had a really outstanding wellness fair last Saturday. So I applaud Keith and your group for that. That was a lot of fun. We had a lot of people out there, a lot of, you know, tables and I call them vendors for lack of a better word, you know, participants. So it was, what was nice was that, you know, we've come a long way from having a, you know, a fair or that would mainly just talk about the opioid, you know, crisis to basically going into, you know, health and wellness. I mean, there's even water safety. I mean, there's out there, you know, the Coast Guard was there, you know, DNR was. We had a, yeah, you could get your blood pressure checked, all kinds of stuff. And it was just, just really great. I want to thank the weather for, you know, cooperating for a couple of hours anyhow, right? You know, it was better than, better than, than nothing. So thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Just want to, you know, remind everybody that, you know, you know, coming up on the 28th, we have Socks and Stripe Festival. We'll be at Veterans Park at 10:00. And then at 1:00, we're going to have the Great American Picnic Family Fun Day. So that'll start at 1:00. We're going to have burgers and hot dogs and ice cream and music by Out of Order? Yeah, yeah. A lot of us have heard of Out of Order or seen them around in their various, you know, restaurants and they're, they're pretty good. So we're going to have, you know, live music, beer and wine vendors, you know, games, activities. So it'll be, it'll be a whole lot of fun. And I look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you. Now, as we all know, spring is a beautiful time to be in Chesapeake Beach, you know, but it's also budget season for the hardworking town council and staff, you know? So I'm elated, you know, to report that last month for the sixth year in a row, the town council was able to reduce the town property tax rate for our citizens. And six years in a row. So I employed the council, the town treasurers, and the town administrator and, you know, the rest of staff for being able to make this happen, you know? However, in order to maintain the financial stability of our utility fund, this year, we must increase the town's water and sewer rates. The slide that we are about to present explains our new rates and points out how Chesapeake Beach rates will still be significantly lower, as in more than 50% than our surrounding jurisdictions, Calver County and North Beach. So having said that, I'll give way to the slide. What I got. Okay. So I'll just read from there. Okay. I'll read the points. All right. So I have a cheat sheet, everybody. The town of Chesapeake Beach continues to provide affordable water and sewer services to residential and business customers. Utility rate increases are proposed to establish a self-sufficient utility fund with a focus on paying by use and burden on the infrastructure while promoting water conservation. Utility fund has operated at a deficit for many years. The town has 4.8 million in long-term debt tied to the utility fund at a 1% interest rate. The utility fund has 3.1 million in reserves with 2 million set aside for infrastructure improvements. The town's new rate ranges from a 10% increase for the lowest usage, 1 gallon to 4,000 gallons, to a 70% increase for the highest usage, over 15,000 gallons. If a user reaches a higher use range, the lower rate will be applied to the lower use range. Thank you, Councilman Fink. The town's new rate continues to be 50% lower than those rates charged by residents outside the town limits, as in Calver County and North Beach. You can see the, the table up there. The proposed changes include applying fixed fees by equivalent dwelling units, EDUs, and create a fair and balanced cost structure for all users. This approach is consistent with the Calver County government's rate structure. However, the town's rate is still approximately 70% less than, than the rate would be paid at the large commercial users if they were in the county outside the town. The proposed changes provide that a commercial building with multiple uses with one address must pay a fixed fee per EDU, not a fixed fee per address. Historically, the town's utility fund has been balanced by general taxpayer through, through allocations from the general fund to eliminate shortfalls. The use of general funds to balance the utility fund decreases the town's ability to receive grant funding for critical projects. Second, the town has, has balanced the utility fund by using capital connection charges as revenue for ongoing expenses rather than setting the funds aside for future infrastructure improvements. Our town council took steps at the beginning of their first term in 2017 to eliminate the reliance on general taxpayer dollars and capital connection charges to balance the utility fund. The new utility rates and allocation of fixed fees by EDU continued this course to directly tie the cost of water and sewer to the actual consumer of the utility. Done. So in summary, the town council, mayor and staff continue to strive to keep Chesapeake Beach the best small town in Maryland. We have no need, we have no need to become a larger sized town as no additional revenue is generated by adding new users to our water and sewer system. The average taxpayer should not be subsidizing the cost of the high-end users. We cannot allow that to happen. Very shortly, we will get to ordinance O-22-6 and the council will have an opportunity to comment on the ordinance and this slide if they choose to. So thank you very much. That's my report. Next, we're going to go to vote on ordinance O-22-5. An ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the water park fund of the town council of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, vote on ordinance O-22-6. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach adopting the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '22 to June 30 of '23, setting rates, charges and fees related to water and sewer service by the town. Is there a motion to approve?
No move. Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'll begin with Peggy.
No questions. No comments.
Thank you.
No comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morris?
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. In terms of the rates, I think it's important to note that these rates have not increased for three years, I believe it is.
It's like five.
Five. So it's been quite a while since there's been any rate increase. I will point out that as part of my previous professional career of doing water work, I totally support the idea of encouraging water conservation by increasing rates for increased usage to protect our drinking water supplies and also to protect our water reclamation treatment plant. That said, from an economic development point of view, I do have a, see a concern that several of our businesses in town are in the food industry and they just are limited, if not prohibited, from reducing their water use to meet the standards necessary for food service industry. So that just concerns me a little bit, but I just wanted to get on the record about that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Fink?
Just real quick. First of all, thanks for, for working out those rates. I know that that was a bit of a team effort. Makes a huge difference, I think, in fairness. I, I'll stop beating that drum because I think it's well covered. But I just want to follow up on what Councilman Dorsky said. That change is significant for businesses as well because even if they can't reduce their use, they're still paying lower rates on the, on the initial use that they have. So the net of their bill is going to be significantly less impacted because of that change. Important to point that out, that it is business friendly.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We have a motion to approve it in a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you, Council. Next, vote on ordinance O-22-7. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30 of 21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Vote on ordinance O-22-8. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plan fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and, and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, vote on ordinance O-22-9. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town council of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 2020 to June 30 of 21 to reconcile expenses and, and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Vote on ordinance O-22-10. An ordinance of the town council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the water park fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '20 to June 30 of '21 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And lastly, vote on ordinance O-22-1, I mean, -11. An ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, amending the adopted general fund budget of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of '21 to June 30 of '22 to add funds in the amount of $25,000 in general fund hotel tax and general government salaries and wages. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Next, before I go on to the report and offers, you can really see by what we just accomplished, the incredible amount of work that the, the town council, the staff, the treasurers have, have all done. You know, the, you know, Jay, John Castro, you know, everybody. It's just an incredible amount of work and I, it's just an honor for me to serve with these people. And I mean that sincerely. Thank you very much. Next, planning and zoning, no meeting held in April. Word of appeals, no hearing held. We have a new member. Next, Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society. As bittersweet as it is, as we, as we probably all know now, John Bacon is going to, you know, retire. And, but the good news is, and we're going to get to meet, if you don't already know, Sue Alexander, I don't know why you don't know her, you know?
Most everybody here knows her.
I just thought we'd want to, I'm not asking you to give a report. I just say hi and we'll say hi and.
Well, I was going to say, John gave me a report. Have you already seen it? It sounds like you all get his reports.
Yeah, we do. Yeah.
Okay. You've seen this report. I'm, I have huge, huge shoes to fill and I'm excited about this. I'm very committed to this program, to the oyster restoration project. I've been working on the field trip for three years now, the field trips for three years now. So I'm very familiar with that side of it. And with Jay's, oh, Jay's gone. Jay's, I'm really going to be leaning on Jay a lot to help me with the rest of it, but I am committed to that. I'm committed to the education of our town, not just the kids, but the adults too, about the importance of oyster restoration and the health of our bay and how that impacts our little, beautiful little town here. So I'm looking forward to doing this.
Well, thank you. And we all know how I feel about our volunteers, how we feel about our volunteer. So thank you.
Thank you.
I can't fish in that bay, but I can fish in this council room, can I?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. Climate change? Larry?
Just one quick one on climate change. The Coastal Resiliency Committee met on May 19th to discuss the ongoing work of the group and prepare for the next meeting of the Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee, which is scheduled for Wednesday, June 8th at 7:00 PM. Updates on both those efforts will be provided at the June council meeting, but the, the work is moving forward on continuing with mapping and identification of flood-prone areas, I would say. So that's all. Co-chair Keith, anything?
Just a quick reminder about the carbon footprint information, but otherwise, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Co-chair Keith, CCK, that kind of rolls off the tongue there.
Coach.
Thank you. EDC, Larry?
Yes, and Sharon, I apologize. This is a little bit longer than I expected. I should have gotten something in writing to you. As mentioned in the report by the operations manager, a town participated in several functions associated with Calvert County Economic Development Week. And that was also coupled with the National Travel and Tourism Week and the Calvert County Business Appreciation Week, all held earlier in May. As part of the Business Appreciation Week, members of the county commissioners and the County Economic Development Advisory Committee visited local businesses across the county, including the Chesapeake Beach Resort and Spa and Bayside History Museum. Also on Friday, May 6th, the town was visited by the Travel Writers Association. This group has been here in town before. The Travel Writers Association of Pennsylvania, they visited our town last year and this year toured around the Twin Beaches area. As indicated in Mr. Bacon's report, during this visit, a TV crew filmed segments for a local TV show in Pennsylvania called Out in the Open. And they not only visited the Sea Box Oyster Aquarium, but also visited the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum. We'll look forward to seeing those film clips. They have promised that they will share them when they're done. The Southern Maryland Municipal Association held a membership meeting at the Wheelhouse in North Beach on Wednesday, May 11th. And a couple of updates, the Twin Beaches Library groundbreaking is scheduled for Tuesday, May 24th at 2:00 PM. And following that event, there will be a ceremony for the renaming of Sunrise Garden. And what that entails is the North Beach Sunrise Garden will now be called the Mark R. Frazier Sunrise Garden to honor former North Beach Mayor Mark Frazier. And that's Tuesday at 3:30. Busy month, all intended to get the word out about businesses and tourism opportunities available in our town and our neighbor, North Beach. Co-chair Greg, anything to add?
Nothing for me, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a quick question for the, for economic, Larry, you mentioned. Next, a quick question for the, for economic, Larry, you mentioned, I miss it. Was the library groundbreaking in your array of events?
Okay. It is Tuesday, May 24th at 2:00 PM at the new site up on Fifth.
Very good, thanks. Next, on Green Team, Councilman Bodine is in present, and I'm just going to take a second here since we were, you know, you know, talking about when Lieutenant Sharp was here and I was, you know, talking about you come to new town to, you know, raise your family and it's a great town, you know, to raise a family. And Councilman Bodine wanted to be here, but she is at a special award ceremony for her, her daughter, who I believe is a senior at Northern High. And it just, you know, we were all talking about, you know, a great small town to come to and to raise a family. And I just, you know, I'm going to take the time to give a shout out to Valerie and Glenn for, and if you've ever met Ashley, you'll understand what I'm saying, for the wonderful job that they did raising their daughter in this wonderful town of Chesapeake Beach. So we can get her Green Team report next month. Callum's Field, Councilman Morris?
Yeah, I don't have an update. Councilman Fink, something you wanted to?
No, nothing new, although it was nice to, the rain notwithstanding, it was nice to see the event out on Callum's Field. You know, that's nice to see.
Thank you. Twin Beaches Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to start by thanking, once again, the Holly and Carla and the town administration for really pulling that whole health and wellness fair together, really. They did a great job. We all wish it had not been so rainy, but I think the folks that did go there and, you know, participated in the 5K and got a chance to see some of the resource providers and go to their, their tables and get information and get cholesterol tests or whatever they wanted to do there, I think had a, had a good time and found it worthwhile. And I know some of the resource providers reported that they had some really good interactions with some of the folks who came there and came up to their tables. So that was wonderful to hear. And also, Public Works, as I watched them tearing everything down in the rain, it just made me, you know, really appreciate their efforts in getting us all set up and then, of course, taking everything down again and, and not really, you know, getting to do the whole four hours even. So, so really, thanks to Jay and his crew for all the work that they did.
If I must, as we ran into our dry cars.
Exactly, exactly. So, so all of that, I just wanted to, once again, thank you. We're hoping, you know, next year will be even, even better than this.
Indeed.
Again. We have not had a, an official meeting. Some of our subcommittees have been working on things. I'll have, I'm planning on having some more information for our next council work session on that. And that's for the art competition that we're kind of planning. And, and then, of course, we're also planning for the International Opioid Awareness, Overdose Awareness Day, which is the last day of August, August 31st, an event. And we will be giving out purple light bulbs again this year. We've got some dates scheduled that we'll be giving bulbs out here in late August out in front of Town Hall. So more to come on that. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Walkable Community Advisory Group, Mr. Fink?
Yeah, a couple of quick notes. So our committee, I've actually received a couple of emails this week asking for an update because we haven't met in a while. And so the challenge that we have, and I don't want to make this negative because it's not, but we're just, we're in a holding pattern on a lot of stuff. And Holly knows this and, you know, Wayne knows this. And so we're in a holding pattern. We, we will meet, once we have dates for the public outreach, we will have a meeting before that to finalize a couple of things on our wayfaring ideas. But beyond that, at this point, we need to, we need to move some of these things forward. And that's kind of where our efforts are, a little bit behind the scenes as opposed to forward-facing meetings. I'm not a big fan of meeting, you know, every month with, without a clear agenda, taking people volunteer time. So that's sort of where we are. We can have bigger discussions about that. But that's what I have to offer at the moment. And I will see if Peggy wants to put a cap on that or what.
Just to say, I think our next immediate activity is we will be having a public reach out for the couple of parks and such that we have money for that, to get their opinion on what should happen and what could be done there. And so I think that's our next very active thing that will be going on the next few weeks.
Thank you, sir. No one finished business? New business. Town Council to consider the appointment of Steve Sharp to the Board of Appeals. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. He's in the boat now. Town Council to consider awarding a contract to Old Line Environmental Sinagro, Sinagro, thank you, for one-year term with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms for biosolid removal at the Chesapeake Beach Water Reclamation Treatment Plant per the pricing provided to the town by RFP on May 4th of 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this point in time, is there any, any public comment from the audience? Hearing none, I'll begin our lightning round with Peggy.
All right. I, you know, I really enjoyed our tour. We did take the tour of the water treatment plant. That was, as I said before, fantastic. And I wanted to know if there are any other areas that tours are offered. And now I've heard that there's one with the Department of Public Works that Charlie had, that secret tour. But maybe something from the water park? Should I hear? A water park back, back behind the scenes tour to learn about the workings of that? Or if there's any other possibilities for the council to get some of these tours of areas that we talk about all the time. But seeing it really is impressive and very, very interesting.
We'll be happy to work that.
So what else we could do there? And also, do we have to do school tours of the wastewater treatment plant? Or is it just too small? I mean, you know, you don't want a crowd in there.
We haven't. John has hosted several tours of children in the past.
I think that's a great place for them to start learning what they do and where the dirt goes. Also, I wanted to say that I did enjoy my visit to the Health and Wellness Fair. I got there later in terms of it because it was sort of in the middle of the time period. But I found out a lot of information as far as, for a number of things that I didn't know about. I didn't even know I should ask about. So it was pretty cool. Thank you to everyone who brought that about.
Very good.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I don't really have anything more. So y'all have a great evening.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I'd just like to give a plug for the Stars and Stripes Festival we have coming up. It's May 28th. I want to underscore that we'll have the Memorial Day Service at the Veterans Park at 10:00 AM Saturday, May 28th. And any of you listening and haven't attended one of those, it's a nice ceremony to attend. And then from 1:00 to 4:00, we have the festival at the field. Boy, this warm weather, it's rolling in here.
And I'm going to interject with, before we leave, I'm going to need council to be sure that they have signed all these ordinances. It's very important that you sign them before you leave. And it's, it's, it's a lot of signatures, you know. So yes, please. Sir.
Just repeat what my colleague, Mr. Morris, just said about joining us for the Memorial Day events. And in addition to the two that he mentioned, I'll also remind you all that on Monday, actual Memorial Day, the American Legion will host their ceremony at Veterans Park at 10:00. So come on out for that one as well. Thank you.
Wanted to, I thought the, I thought the, oh, you're right, the veterans, the ones at 10:00 AM, sorry. Why would I contradict Larry? That's silliness. So first of all, let me, let me echo what Peggy said about the water tour. You know, we make some jokes and it, it, it's really kind of amazing and educational. And I think it's a great idea for people to see it, to see what goes on back there to the extent we can do that. There used to be a, oh, there was an old biking trail in Arlington. I can't remember the name of it. And they actually had, it went, part of it ran along a water treatment plant right outside of Sherrlington. And they actually had signs on the fence. So as you, you know, rollerbladed or biked by it, you would see these signs and they would explain what's happening at each phase of the, of the plants. It's kind of interesting. So thanks again for all that. And I made a note here to request that now that we're signing things in person, that we, you know, spread these out a little bit in the future so we don't get carpal tunnel. But you've now addressed, we got to do this tonight. So.
Do it, bro.
Go. I'm really ready for summer. I'm looking forward to in-person events. It's like the old days, as they say. So Stars and Stripes, fireworks, whatever else hopefully takes the beaches. Yeah, really looking forward to that. So I'll just close with my new mantra, stay safe, stay civil.
It's the good Lord agreeing with you. I don't know what's going on here, sorry. Okay, these things do something different every day. On that note.
8:05, I guess it's time to go.
Yeah, that was it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Good night, everybody. And great job, great work. All right. The things that need to be signed are over on the left. They're over on the left. So, so you could probably take care of your business with lieutenant and still sign. Yeah, thanks.